Okay, we have the time as seven o'clock. Call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colicetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. Next is approval of minutes. There are none. And next is additions to agenda. Yes, Mayor Marlin?
We'd like to remove items number four through eight from the agenda. These are all related to appeals to the Property Tax Appeal Board.
Thank you. Any others? Next is public input and presentations. No scheduled presentations. Seeing no members in the physical audience. Are there any emails requested to be read aloud? Yes, Jia?
There's one that came in just recently. Sorry, let me just confirm if it says to read it. Nope, sorry, it doesn't say to read aloud, so it'll just be included in the packet.
Yes, thank you. Okay, no further public input. Any staff report? Yes, Diane?
Just a couple of items. One is the city was notified by the Department of Community and Economic Opportunity that the Hope Village project has been selected to receive an Urban Shelter CDBG award of 1.2 million dollars. Based on the email that came in, there were, it looked like 12 awards in the entire state. 10 of those were up north and two of them were downstate, one in Peoria and one here in the city of Urbana. So that's very good news for Hope Village. And our grants manager will be, or a representative from the Grants Management Office will be attending a meeting this week to get more details. And then I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the city of Urbana for everyone who participated in the 57,000 events that occurred last week in the city, including the Pride Parade, Welcoming Week, Pygmalion, the African-American Arts and Culture Festival. And I know I'm forgetting a bunch of things, but it was a very busy and beautiful week in the city of Urbana.
Thank you. Did you know other staff reports? Next, we have unfinished business. Our item here is Resolution Number 2024-08-058R, a resolution approving standardized employment agreement templates for city appointees.
So I can make this pretty brief because really this is just a continuation of a discussion that you started a couple of weeks ago. There was, we noted one change that staff was directed to make in the agreement from the last discussion. And once you complete discussion tonight, we're assuming, you know, we have clear direction, then what we will do is in the packet for next week, if you move it to council, we will include a revised resolution with attached agreements with all the revisions that were directed to make by council. And I'm just going to give it back to you, and Michelle is here to answer questions about the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, James?
Thank you. So one of the things I've been thinking about since we talked about this last is, obviously, if we were to pass it in its current form, the mayor would have the opportunity to negotiate contracts with a number of employees that would be qualified for this. And one of the things that, the way it's stated now, employees who had worked for a while would then be entitled to several weeks, up to, what, 20 weeks of severance? And I'm curious, the thing that I was kind of concerned about was, if that happened, not saying that's what the mayor's going to do, but if the mayor went through and negotiated this for everyone who was eligible, that might be a significant liability that we would have to account for on our books with regard to how many weeks of severance there. I mean, that's only a concern if there's a large amount of changes, but we do know that we have an election coming up. We do have transition in the mayor's position, so it's not unexpected that maybe some, some things will change. And so I think it's important that we, we know if, you know, what that potential liability might be, and if we've accounted for it from a budgetary standpoint.
So what I will say is this, is that when employees separate from the city, normally we have a period of time where there's a vacancy because we don't, we can't immediately fill the position. And generally, that savings from the period where the position is vacant is adequate to cover any costs related to separation. That's how we normally handle it.
Okay, but I mean, I assume we have an average amount of time it takes for us to fill a position. How many weeks did we go without a police chief?
Oh, well, that was a, I don't even remember.
More than 20 weeks, right?
Yes, well over 20 weeks.
If that had been a person with a 20-week severance, the vacancy would have covered for the gap.
Correct. And usually, for these positions at this level, tend to take more, even more time to fill than average. So while we might fill, for example, a maintenance worker position in public works very quickly, generally, for these positions, I would say it's going to be four to six months.
Okay. Well, that's helpful from a standpoint of whether we can do it. I still think there's a reasonable question about how, how large a liability we should set ourselves up for and whether we should do it in that fashion. Thank you.
Yes, Mary Ellis?
So if we assume that everybody who's in an appointed position gets one of these contracts, and just to kind of expand a little bit on James's question, does that mean in terms of the start year is not the start of this contract, but the start of their employment on, or is it the start of this contract, the specific contract? Because I think it would make more sense to do it that way.
Right. And I believe that is what councilperson Quisenberry is advocating, right? That a start of the execution of the contract would start the period for the accrual of severance. Is that correct?
That's one way I could imagine limiting the liability to, to grow in the way new contracts would wind it up growing.
Okay. What I had, what it is currently worded as, though, is a recognition of start from when they're in the position, because we do have people that have been in these positions for a period of time. And I think there was a desire to recognize that, right? That they've served in this, and they've been committed to the city for this period of time, as opposed to somebody who is newly hired into that position.
Always a transition.
It's Jia?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm still getting caught up because I wasn't here for the original conversation. I've watched part of that meeting, but didn't quite make it through, so I apologize if this is a repeat. Is this something that has, there, is this common practice? Is this something that other municipalities are doing? I'm curious where this is coming from.
Many municipalities do have employment contracts for appointees.
Other questions? I think I have two that are questions in the way of, I guess if you've had time to consider, just briefly since yesterday, sorry if I'm not getting them in sooner than that, about two in particular, adding language about exemptions to indemnification, adding the specific language on which article and chapter, because that's what I'm imagining we're talking about, right? All the, that's written in city code, that nothing in this contract would supersede city code, so we're referring to that. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that, that is a well-taken point, that I can refer to that with a little more specificity. It is such a long section, and I wanted to make sure that we didn't refer too specifically to particular language, because I wanted council, obviously, to be able to change that ordinance if they ever thought it was appropriate without us having to go back and worry about conflict with the contracts. But I can be more specific in terms of referencing the particular part of that section.
I think not even the section, just the chapter.
Sure.
Because it just said Article IX, but there's an Article IX in quite a few chapters.
Okay.
So just the, the higher level, not even more specific, less specific. There's the chapter was missing to find which article it was referencing.
Can do, thank you.
And then one other was about considering Section 14 on transition of duties, also as Elizabeth had mentioned, that, I guess one question being if, I couldn't find in our city code where I thought it said something about covering duties until the vacancy was filled. And this language, I think, is very vague, which I think makes sense as far as there's going to be variability, but also so vague that how could we enforce it? And so I don't know if there's consideration on something like a time period or what qualifications of fulfilling that transition, like if it was something like for, you know, up to 90 days after leaving position, or until the role was filled, or until all of the documents and training things have been passed on, just like some kind of qualifying thing. I just don't know how we could enforce that on either side, as is.
I understand, and I think that is a well-taken question. I will tell you, we spent a lot of time on this section because of exactly the points you've raised, right? How to make it enforceable, how to speak to it with the specificity that we might like, but also contemplate a whole variety of scenarios. And I was afraid that if we locked ourselves in with too much specificity, then we'd be in a situation where we would actually, could be precluded from fulfilling the position when we might have an opportunity, right? If we actually found somebody suitable sooner than we'd already agreed to in consultation with this employee. So I, I do agree, it's, it's difficult to navigate. We do have language in there, I think, that, that clarifies that there's obligations to complete responsibilities, things like that. But that is one that I do agree, but we were really trying to leave ourselves some flexibility for any mayor to also be able to dictate the timeline for transition that worked best for the city. Because in certain situations, we might have somebody prepared to step into the role very quickly, and others, it might take longer.
And do you think like a cap or anything would make sense? You know what I'm saying? Like up to a certain time period? Because with this, it just seems like, are we going to try and hold someone to this for like a year or two later? Like, there's just, there's no kind of cap.
Like a maximum period of time for transition? I, I think that that's fair. I would defer to the mayor on the actual terms and what she thinks it might be helpful for her to have in that window. But it would be possible to say, you know, a transition up into the amount of six months or, you know, however long.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Jia?
Thanks. I was hoping for some clarification because it says there, the action would have no fiscal impact, but we're talking about bonuses. Can you explain that to me, how there would not be a fiscal impact to providing bonuses to these positions?
I, I think as we looked at this, are you, are you talking about the residency incentive?
I'm just looking at the, the memo that was provided for this, and it's, it doesn't clarify which piece. It just overall, in the fiscal and budget impact section, it says this action would have no fiscal impact since it is not expected to affect the amount of compensation to offer, offered to an appointed employees, but we're talking about $10,000 bonuses. So that would be an impact on what we're offering to employees.
I mean, overall, we expect that there will be enough vacancies during the course of the year, that if we do have anybody that qualifies for that, it won't require a budget amendment, so we'll be able to cover it.
So to clarify, you're saying it won't, when you say there's no fiscal impact, it's not that that wouldn't adjust compensation. It is, there would be an additional amount that's being provided to people. I think the wording of that is inaccurate, right? That there, it might not have enough to cause a budget amendment, but depending on the number of positions that we're talking about, or even one, if we're talking about five or $10,000, that's, you know, a lot of our grants that we give out are five or $10,000. I think it's, it's important for, for the council to understand, like, that's a program we could be funding, right? That's not an inconsiderable amount of money to, to say is not going to have an impact, even if it's just one person, $10,000 is a lot of money.
Other questions? Yes, Mary Ellis?
I know that we have had people, you know, leave positions generally. What has been the practice in terms of the amount that is paid? We've been talking about 20 weeks. What has been the practice of the city without having the actual policy in place?
Are we talking about somebody who leaves not through their own choice?
Yes.
Is that, is that what you're saying? I would say that hasn't happened frequently, but it has varied depending on the circumstance.
But is it this standard? I mean, we've got, you know, a number of weeks for every year. How is that typically, I can think of a couple of instances since I've been here that it's happened, but I don't know how those benefits were determined at that time.
There's not a specific formula that, that we've used when it's an involuntary separation.
So incentives would standardize that formula, so to speak?
It would standardize it for the, the employees that we're talking about here, for the appointed employees, yeah.
And I know that there was, there was some question about the 20-week cap. Can you expand on how you came to the 20-week?
That's state law.
That's state law? I, I guess I'm confused. If, if there was state law, then why do we need to have that in here?
Because we have the up to, we had the, we had the graded gradations for tenure in here. Is that what, is that what your question is?
Could it be lower than 20?
Yeah, I, I thought we had written it in a way such that makes it clear. We, we put in the maximum, but we had kind of a tiered system depending on how long you've been here.
I, I guess I was trying to figure out, how did we reach that maximum of 20 weeks? How was that determined?
I was under the understanding that that was, those were the terms that had been discussed when I drafted this.
Hey, one more question?
Yes, Mary Ellis?
I guess, and perhaps this is a question for the mayor, is, is the intent if this passes, that all appointed positions would then be granted the contract?
Depends on the position. For example, and I don't think it's wise to mandate that every single appointed position be granted this contract. For example, there's cases where we've had people serving in interim positions. I think back to, I think it was 2018, we had an interim fire chief, external chief, served for some months, but it's not, but it was not something I would have wanted to offer this particular employment contract with. We have temporary appointments, for example, or limited-term appointments, which are not permanent. So, so that would be an example of where you wouldn't give this particular employment contract. I just think it's important to have some, some flexibility. For most full-time, permanent positions, yes, but, but there are times when we've had, we've had interim police chiefs, we've had interim fire chiefs, we've had interim people, either external or internal candidates, serving in positions.
For interim people, it doesn't make sense. This is more of a permanent position-type thing. I guess I'm, excuse me, I'm trying to figure out, in addition, is the, the moving target, shall we say. So we have, luckily, we have a lot of staff who are permanent, which we want to keep. But if we go back to, for example, the residency moving expenses, I'm assuming that people who are already in positions won't be eligible for those types of things. Once again, I come to that idea of we have, we have people in existing versus future, and how does this contract play with those two groups of people? Is that a correct assumption, that people who are in existing, existing positions would not be eligible for the $10,000 to relocate into the city of Urbana?
I think that was how it was drafted. If somebody's already here at time of hire, they're given something, but if they're already in the position, we're not going back and retroactively paying current appointees that are already in the city of Urbana.
Bottom line, we would like our top-level leaders who are establishing policy for the city of Urbana to live in the city of Urbana and be subject to those same policies that our residents are. So that's, that's the ultimate goal. The question was raised about the police contract. That is a separately negotiated contract term, so that's not in play here. But, but in terms of our appointed employees who make policy that impacts everyday lives for residents and businesses, it's important, I think, that they live here, and that's what this is for.
Yes, James?
So I, I recall that you mentioned that state law was the source of the 20-week cap. Is that, is that severance for municipal employees? There's state law that limits that?
Yes, I think it was put in place to avoid like a windfall for somebody who's being separated.
Do you have any idea of when that was added? Because I think.
Last five years, I think.
Okay, because I think I can recall, like, city managers having like six-month or year-long severance packages, but it would have been more than five years ago.
Yes.
Okay. So they, they figured that out as a risk, and state legislator helped us, legislatures helped us to limit that exposure.
Yes. Other questions? I had a point of clarification and a questions, that the police bonuses were not part of the contract requirement. What I was referring to was the bonuses that the city gave out by our own will, that we set the terms to, that seemed to be a same situation. So I guess the question still stands, what was the difference for that? Because the terms of the contract was not what I'm referencing. I'm referencing the bonuses that were at city discretion.
Are you talking about the hiring and retention bonuses?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was your question about those again?
Why the administration, or if anyone else of majority of council who was not for it at the time, was not in favor of residency bonus incentives for police officers? That was not part of the FOP contract or requirement. It was part of our freely given bonus incentives, but it is appropriate now for appointed positions.
I, I apologize. I don't mean to be obtuse. So are you asking why we didn't build a residency option for bonuses into those hiring and retention incentives for non-appointed police officers?
Yes. And so I guess, you know, that's a previous issue. The question, I guess, being why not then and now for these? Because that was brought up. I had brought up that I would like the incentives to be some residency-based portion, and that was not supported by the majority of council or the administration and staff. And so my question is, if that wasn't appropriate, then what makes this the appropriate time now for these positions? And I hear the point about being connected to the community and living there, and I agree with that. And just wondering if anyone who was opposed to that same incentive for police officers at the time had any clarification on the difference now? Mary Ellis?
I will say that I recall that conversation, but not in regards to this, the particular bonuses that we gave for retention. I recalled in another context. So I wouldn't be opposed to it, and it, if it was, my understanding, is part of the other part, not part of the FOP contract. So perhaps I'm not remembering exactly that exact amount, but I do remember having a conversation about it.
Yes, James?
Yeah, I'm, I understand the intent behind this, but I'm not particularly married to having that be a bonus. I, I seem to recall there was a period of time where department heads were expected to move to the city without a bonus. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct.
So, I mean, if we had that expectation without a bonus previously, I would, I would ask, why are we financially incenting that? If it's an important expectation, it should be part of the deal. If it's not, I don't know, I, I'm not, I'm not married to that, that bonus being a financial incentive.
Yes, you were right. That was an expectation for a period of time, and there were exceptions carved out in that. And one, one that became an issue frequently, well, there were two. One was the ability to sell your house and move within a period of time, because that was often very market-dependent and people's financial circumstances. Another one that we found was a big barrier for some people, was the idea of having to move and remove their children from a particular school district and relocate them. And we had situations where people weren't going to advance to a position that we really thought they would be good for, because that meant their children having to move. So I think this was a goal to incentivize people to do it, recognizing that certain people's life situations would really put them, where they would maybe make a choice for their personal interests, right? That would preclude us from being able to have them in that position, and them from being able to explore that opportunity, too. So I think that's why we moved away from, you know, that you must do this for this, to, hey, if possible, we would like you to do this.
Do, does champagne have a similar requirement?
I believe they do have a residency requirement for department heads.
For department heads, not, not senior staff?
I, I, I believe that is correct, what you said.
Okay, because I know some senior staff that have moved over there, and they didn't move their house, they moved their job.
Any other questions? Or entertain a motion?
That's a good question to the council.
Yes, Mary Ellis?
So we've had several different ideas pop up, and I'm wondering if we should do a straw poll on any of them, or if people feel comfortable moving this forward, as is.
I think a straw poll would be in order.
Okay, clarified, you mean for, if we want to consider moving forward with this, or on particular points?
Well, we've, we've discussed a couple of different points. I think Jia brought up the, the bonus, the $10,000 being an incentive and a cost. I know that Grace, you had brought up the, the cap in terms of the number of weeks. I'm just trying to think of different things that people have brought up during the conversation, and I feel like we don't have any clear direction in terms of what everybody thinks we should be doing. So that's why I suggested we have some kind of poll.
Yeah, and I recognize Jia next, but procedurally also, if, probably to the clerk about if we need a motion first, or if we start with straw polls. But we'll, Jia have the floor. Straw polls, okay?
I was just going to say, I think that's a little bit challenging to, to me, because we, we're not in a discussion point to be able to even say. I mean, I hear what you're saying, right, of like trying to get there, but in, in terms of even getting to a point where we're having a motion, you know, I wasn't here for the last discussion, so it's, it's difficult, because I can't really speak to this at this point. so it's difficult, because I can't really speak to this at this point. So, yeah, I guess I'm not opposed to doing a straw poll, but I also think that it's difficult, because we haven't had time tonight for a discussion.
Well, if that is the case, that we need a motion in order to discuss it. I will move to city council with no recommendation. Resolution number 2024-09, oops, sorry. Resolution number 2024-08-058R. Resolution approving standardized employment agreement templates for city employees.
Second, is that a second? Okay. So moved by Mary Alice for regular agenda to city council with no recommendation, seconded by James, and you may have the floor.
Thank you. The things that I've heard, I would suggest, based on the thing I brought up earlier, that we adjust this such that the severance package accumulates based on the age of the contract, rather than the employee's time. So it not be retroactive, that they can still earn up to the cap, wherever the cap ends up. But that it ages with the contract, so that we don't enter into an immediate obligation. That would be one thing that I would ask us to get a sense of the council's opinion on. And if it was positive to make that kind of change, I would move an amendment.
Yes, Jaya.
Thanks. Yeah, I think there are few specifics to discuss, but I also, I will say, I have a lot of concerns about this. It's not about anyone at the city in particular, but as was previously noted, we're in an election year. We're talking about creating policy that's going to have long-term binding effects. The timing of this feels very uncomfortable to me. And I understand that some of this is coming from the timing of it, for appointed staff, looking for that reassurance. I understand that. I also think, you know, changing the way that we do things right before a new mayor is seated and is able to weigh in on what that process and new council is seated, right before that process is going into effect. I think that that raises some questions and concerns for me of how that might tie someone's hands or a group of individuals' hands going forward. I'm not comfortable with the incentives piece. I think, you know, these are positions that are among the most highly compensated in our city. I understand the benefit of having people who are making policy decisions living in our city, and I think, you know, thinking about what expectations we have for those positions is reasonable. But there is a financial implication, right? You know, if we're talking about bonuses, I mean that quite seriously, that there are agencies that, that's more than we give them in funding. So I think there are, the timing of this makes me feel very uncomfortable. The fact that a lot of council members have been out during this discussion makes me very uncomfortable. I think at the very least, we need more time with this, if it's going to move forward at all.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Chandra, hello. Yes, would you like to be recognized? Go ahead.
Thank you. I would just echo everything that Jaya just said. I had my notes here, kind of, you know, with those same sort of points. I think that, you know, this is a resolution or a policy that has an impact on future people who will be sitting in our, in those senior staff positions. And so I don't like any of, much of this resolution. So I, for one, would not be supporting it.
Thank you. Yes, Diane.
I would like to remind folks that it's seven months until the next council and mayor are seated, and we have vacant positions and people awaiting to be appointed immediately. We have two deputy chiefs to appoint, and two deputy police chiefs, and two deputy fire chief candidates. You've received all their resumes. We have vacancies in those four positions. We have a search ongoing now for a community development services director. So while you look ahead to the next council, the next mayor, the next administration, there's a lot of time between now and then when the business of the city has to be conducted. And the employment contracts, these employment agreements, are actually very important to be able to recruit and retain our highly qualified employees. They give a lot of flexibility. They don't lock, really, people into, they give a lot of flexibility, but they also give some certainty to the employees that you have and the employees that you hope to attract here. So I don't, I encourage you to think in terms of today and the implications for the next seven months, as well as the next few years. We have four appointees waiting. You have their resumes. You have their bios.
Ms. Mary Alice?
So I hear everybody's concerns about the longevity and the implications of how this could potentially impact not only the employees currently, but hopefully the new ones, and also the new administration that comes in. So my thoughts are this. Number one, the fact that it says the term is an automatic renewal upon reappointment by the mayor and the council. So in that sentence there, that says to me that even if we pass this as-is today, when the new administration comes in, it still has to be appointed by the mayor and the council to re-op, basically. My concern really was with, how do we balance the need for people to have an understanding of what they can expect from the city as an employer? I think it's good for everything to be spelled out to employees when they work here, you know, what they can expect, what the obligations are of the city, what we expect of the employee. So I think the purpose of this is good. I think it will be good for the city. I am concerned about the amount of money with the residency and moving expenses and so forth. I feel like usually when, I actually want to erase the $10,000 to relocate and rather replace it with the reasonable relocation expenses, if needed, because there are lots of positions throughout the United States where if you want to recruit somebody outside of the state, we give them some, you know, moving expenses, so to speak. And that could be on a case-by-case, and we could put a limit to not exceed X dollars. So those are my thoughts. I think as we, well, and to James's point, to make it so that it's effective as of when we pass it.
Hi.
Yes, Chandra, go ahead.
So I understand, you know, giving employees a little bit of certainty, and a little bit of certainty. But when you apply for and accept positions such as these, sometimes you definitely are serving at the pleasure of that leader, as I do in my current position. So I know that if, you know, the governor says, oh, you know, sorry, Chandra, you're no longer needed, that's the risk that I've taken by accepting this job. I don't think that, you know, it's any different on this level. I think that we can still attract and retain quality employees, even on, without this employee contract and on an appointment schedule. That's sometimes the way these type of jobs work. And, you know, there are people that understand and accept that.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'll go back to Chris. I should go first, you haven't spoke yet.
I think it's important for people to distinguish between serving at the presidential level or the governor level. Let's talk about the city level. City governments, with our form of government, the mayor, council form of government, most of them have appointments. Those appointments go from the time the mayor takes office for the entire duration of the mayor's term, the four-year term. We are unusual in the city of Urbana that for so many years, we had annual appointments. Now they're biannual. Very few cities appoint people on an annual or biannual basis.
Chris, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Pardon?
Chandra, you're unmuted, I don't know if you're aware.
What we need to do is talk about how Urbana compares to other cities in the state and across the nation in our ability to attract and retain highly qualified employees. And the fact that we do annual and biannual appointments is unusual. And I've talked to mayors from other communities with our form of government in Urbana, and they are stunned to find out that we do this on such a regular, on an annual or biannual basis. So to provide at least some degree of certainty for employees is critically important to keep our employees and to attract our new employees. And again, we have four pending appointments.
Chris, you still like the floor?
Thank you. So I was talking to a constituent today. Small business owner, 15 employees. They pay property tax, sales tax, licensing fees, insurance, has a bank loan, has a home, she has to pay on that, property taxes. She has a situation where an infrastructure problem on her property that she believes is the city's responsibility. Well, it turns out that the repair on this is way beyond her ability to pay and afford. So I had to go out to talk to her today, to give her the "nothing we can do" speech. But she knew this was on the agenda tonight. And she was furious. And she wanted to hit me in the face, and I told her to go all the way to the back of the line to do that, because there's a lot of people ahead of her for that. But seriously, she was very, very infuriated that this was on the agenda. And she laid into me pretty good. She said, "You people are always helping yourselves, but you never help us out." That's an exaggeration to some of us, but that's how she felt. So out of respect for her, nope. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, Jaya.
Yeah, thank you. So I think there are a couple of things. One, you know, going back to the incentives piece, we're talking about bonuses that are more than city council members receive for serving on this council. We have to live here. We do it because we care about this community. It's not about the money. And to be asking us to give more than someone would receive just for serving on council, to live in the city, it seems very strange to me. So I'm just going to use that as one benchmark to say again, I don't think that's the best allocation of our resources. I think making sure we're adequately compensating leadership is really important. Looking at salary scales, making sure we are competitive is really important. I think, you know, making sure we can provide as much assurance to staff here as we can makes a lot of sense. I understand the desire for some of the standardization and giving people clarity, but this also isn't 100% that, because it's maybe mostly, but not everyone that we're going to use this for. I still think, I don't think this is the time to do it. I think that there needs to be further discussion. I think there needs to be thought about what this means for people who will sit in these seats going forward. And to say, well, we have four appointments now, we have navigated many appointments without this particular tool, so that feels like a false, you know, saying, if we don't do this, then we can't appoint people. Then I think we need to look at, you know, what are the other things that are either drawing people to the city or drawing them away? We can't say it's just this one issue. It's certainly not what I hear from people who have previously worked at the city as being a primary concern. I'm not saying that I'm hearing from everyone. And I do think that providing as much clarity about job expectations and stability as possible is important. But I think we also have to be realistic about, for one thing, that's not an expectation most people can expect, right? This isn't an at-will state. Most people do live with the uncertainty around their jobs. Where we can provide additional certainty, I think it's important. But I think it's also important not to hamstring the city.
Can I jump in with a question along those lines that you may be wanting to answer?
We're in discussion. You should yield the chair.
Still for questions and discussion?
I thought we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, but to ask a question, because we're in the discussion piece? I'm happy to. Would you mind taking the chair, Jaya?
I'll take the chair, and chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Question being, how long we've been going without this formalized contract? And what necessitates now versus in the past?
Would you like the chair back?
Yeah, I guess.
Good, Grace.
Thank you. Yes, Diane.
I can tell you what necessitates this agreement is the uncertainty that has been created during the last few years around the appointment process. In the past years, when the appointments were brought to city council, they were passed on an annual basis. The last few years have created enormous uncertainty among staff, based on what has happened in this council chambers. And when you look at communities, they have employment agreements. This is not unusual to have some sort of employment agreements for even appointed employees. If you want to get rid of the bonus for residency, go ahead and do that. If you want to reduce the severance pay, you have the option to do that. Champaign, for example, offers up to 20 weeks. That's the state maximum. You can go less than that. You have options here. But I strongly believe, and your employees strongly believe, and you're, I cannot convey to you how important it is to have some sort of employee agreement and standardized approach to this, based on our experience the last few years. People have options here. Your potential employees have options here. And you're closing off those options. And when you talk about how you're going to serve the city of Urbana, what hap, the staff that works here and comes here every day and sets policy here and puts their life into this place are the ones who keep this city running. So we need to be able to have some certainty. And you are in the seats today. It's not the future. You're in the seats today to make these decisions.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your input as head and representative of the executive.
I'm the mayor of Urbana. I do this every day. I experience this every day.
And I'm chairing the committee of the whole at the moment, and I appreciate your input from the executive position. And I also don't want to veer off this being a committee of the whole. Jaya, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I think, again, I believe that it's important to be accurate and truthful. And not passing this does not mean that we cannot provide people with good contracts. I think that's important to state. There's nothing that says that individual contracts couldn't be negotiated. If we're saying we're going to create a template and then not use it for some, but we're going to use it for others, and we don't have clarity on when it's going to be used for appointed positions versus others, that's not creating standardization. It's still saying, this is what we say is going to apply for most, but maybe we'll have some exceptions for other people. I think it's either you can make exceptions, you can do it on an individual level, or you can't. And saying, if we don't pass this, or some version of this, we cannot recruit, retain, and have good staff here, I think that does a disservice to the staff that we have. And I think it's just not accurate. I understand that this is a tool that might benefit that. But if we're saying that the only way that we can recruit and retain good staff is to have a standardized template, but we're not going to use a standardized template, we're just going to use it for most people, that logic is not consistent.
Thank you. Any other council input? Yes, Mary Alice?
So one way to address this would be to take out the things that are contentious at the moment, and put in items such as for appointed positions that aren't interim. Make it standard, we just define who it's standard for. I actually had a question for staff in terms of negotiating a contract. We've seen a couple of them, but they've only come to the city council's attention when it's very unusual. it's very unusual. So I guess my question to Elizabeth is, what types of contracts do appointed people get right now?
So, there are a couple of agreements that predate this city council, but at this point, I think we've made the determination that there either needs to be a template approved by the city council that we use for those agreements, or as in that, such as we did with the police chief, they need to come to council individually. So you, you remember, you approved an employment agreement for the police chief?
Yes, that's the one I remember. And that one was a bit out of the ordinary due to circumstances such as retirement and so forth.
But the, but the vast majority of appointed employees don't have any, anything.
So, so what I'm looking for, and I hear Jaya's point in terms of making things standard or not standard, and ensuring that we're able to recruit. In my opinion, I think having some kind of standard understanding is good as we try and recruit new people. It's not necessarily like it's a must, but I think it gives more certainty to people who are looking at the city of Urbana for employment. It's not that we can't recruit good people, I just think that it helps if we have something in place. I am, I am in favor of having a standardized agreement that we can all agree on today. If there are other items that need to be input after, if the next city council or the next mayor decides, A, I really want to have only 10 paid holidays, which is not going to happen, but, you know, they can come in and, and change the contract for the next upcoming contract year. So I, I feel like it would be in the best interest of the city if we come to some agreement on some of the language, maybe not 100% on this, but something that goes to all permanent positions. So, those are my thoughts.
Others? Oh, yes, Michelle?
I, thank you. I just wanted to make a clarification regarding appointees. So we have appointees, we have no at-will employees other than appointees. So, one thing I did want to speak to, right, was the, mainly the retention issue. If we are going to move people up for within the city, there comes a point when they become appointee where they're leaving job protections of either the civil service or a union. And I think that is a very vulnerable place, right? When you hire in department heads, these are people who've usually transitioned to higher levels, and they kind of understand that. But when you have people that are moving up who have been career employees with the city of Urbana, and we're asking them to move up because we think that they'd be good leaders, that's a very vulnerable place for people, to leave behind that job protection of either civil service or a union where they can only be fired if they're not doing their job well, as opposed to a non-reappointment. So that is the one, one way that Urbana is different, because we do have civil service protection in addition to unions.
Thank you. Yes, James?
I would like to find the things that are objectionable to, to people who do want, don't want to support this, and consider removing them, such as Mary Alice had suggested. I do think it's important for the template to move forward. The particular things that, maybe I'm not hearing this right, but the particular things that are bothering individuals, I don't know why we don't just take them out at this point, so we can move forward and have a capability. When, you know, when, when people are looking for jobs, and there's multiple choices, and one place offers a different kind of stability than another place, the place with less stability is going to potentially lose out. I'm also somewhat concerned with the possibility that we are looking at department head positions as political appointments. I don't think at the level of city government that that's a, a good place for us to be in. Not saying anybody's advocating for that, but it has, when you appoint these things as we had done yearly, it does, it does feel like it's subject to the, the whims of politics. And we want professionals to do these jobs. We don't want to turn these over on the basis of what someone did last month that, that made a particular group unhappy. These are, these are senior positions. These are significant positions. To be competitive for them, we have to, we have to want to bring these people here and give them a place to work. I am comfortable removing the residency bonus. I'm comfortable adjusting the, the severance component. But I don't know what other else in this particular agreement, as it's set out right now, feels like it is a concern that needs to be addressed. If there are others, I would prefer to hear them and attempt to remove them or fix them such that we can get the basis put in place.
Thank you. And I am compiling a list here, and I'm happy to walk us through a straw poll when we get to that point. I do want to share some discussion. I'll let it keep going, but I was cut off from discussion last cow in chairing this one, so just before anybody jumps into anything too rash, I'm taking notes. I'll lead a straw poll. I'll recognize Jaya, and I also have discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a little hard for me to, to say what all else, because quite frankly, while the staff have been burned by the way things have gone during this term, so has city council. The fact that things have been written in ways that were not clear to council from the very first year makes it very difficult for me to feel confident that I'm not going to miss something that's going to cause difficulties for people who come after us, just to be perfectly transparent. For myself, at least, in terms of the appointment process, as soon as I asked to see a resume and asked questions for clarification, it was seen as disliking or saying you're not going to reemploy someone. I have a problem with that. I think that we do have an obligation when we're supporting an appointment or confirming it, to actually know who we're talking about. And I think that this council has been scolded for asking questions. I'm not commenting on additional factors outside of that. Some, you know, people are going to make choices about how they navigate that process, but I do think just asking questions has been seen as not supporting staff, and I think that's a problem. I think that it is important that if we're saying, "Yes, we, we support this person continuing in that role," that we understand who they are and, and why they're in that role. I think there are a lot of potentially good things in here, but I just, you know, I think, James, your question of, you know, what are the concerns? I think that, that some of them have been named, right, in terms of the, the length of the severance, you know, when the, when this applies to, and the, the bonus. But at least at this point, I'm concerned that there might be something that I'm missing. And it makes me, it very difficult for me to move forward with something that I think could be helpful, because council doesn't have independent advice on legal issues. We've been told different things at different points in terms of what we can, cannot ask city staff for, so I think at the very least, I would want more time to look at this and see if there are other things that, that might be concerning to me.
Thank you. And, um, Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair so I may discuss?
Sure, and the chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I'll echo some of the frustrations all around with some past appointment processes. And I will say that I'm not a rubber-stamper council member, and I don't apologize for that. I think we have a duty to look into our city servants and how we're spending taxpayer money and how we're running things. I have valid reasons for any novoins, no votes I've given on appointment. I haven't shared them publicly, but anyone's welcome to ask if you'd like to know. I am torn here, because I, I generally support the idea of having employment contracts for appointed positions. I was a little shocked to find out that we haven't been having them up until now. I think it's, again, also important to balance that with employee benefits and protections with costs to taxpayers, and just as we do with any other employment negotiations. I also have concerns about the timing and motivations of doing this now, and only for certain employees. I feel uncomfortable with employees to whom this contract applies, being the ones drafting, presenting, and advocating for it. Seems to me like a conflict of interest, with at least inappropriate optics. And reiterating some points, I think that this needs to apply to all appointed positions. I agree with removing the interim or temporary positions there. I would also like to propose that it be at the mayor's discretion for the insertable sections, not outside of that. I think we've made it pretty clear with what are the insertable parts within this contract. As you've read, I recommend reducing severance pay to a maximum of 16 weeks, also in favor of removing or reducing the residency bonus, and then as we've kind of brought up in questions about some language clarification on indemnification and transition of duty. And I'll just make sure I got all my points. Well, I don't have the chair, and I think that's all. Take it back.
All right, and I relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Any other council inputs? Yes, Diane?
I think I heard there is a common agreement here. Interim and temporary positions really should not be part of this, should not receive employment agreements. These are for permanent positions only. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Or standardized. And, and, and the reason being, we, we do run indications where we have interim and temporary appointments, where every, every, that's a, that's an individual customized situation, and these employment agreements would not apply to.
Oh, yes. Chandra, did you have anything else to add?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Yes, James?
I, I would, I would ask Chandra if, if there's any specific items that you, that causes you to not be supportive of this. If you can, share them at this time.
They've been named, the residency requirement, the, or the bonus, residency bonus, the,
You want me to read what I have so far?
For severance. Those are the, the two biggest ones.
Okay. And so, to clarify here, what I have so far is, Chandra stated, things up on the docket to take a straw poll are for removing any retroactive severance accumulation for current employees, removing residency incentive, reducing severance to 16 weeks max, applying to all full-time permanent appointments, not interim or temporary, and only insertable language at discretion of the mayor. And am I missing any? Yes, Mary Alice?
I, I just want to add in specialized. So interim, temporary, I, I know that we have special appointments.
Can you give an example?
Andrea.
That's a limited term.
Limited term, thank you. So it wouldn't apply to limited term?
Right.
Okay.
No.
I just want to be clear.
And were there any others that were missing from that list for straw poll? And I have two last questions, if someone's willing to take a chair.
I'll take the chair. And the chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify the point that was brought up about exemption of severance from removal by the mayor, because that section 12E, I hadn't looked it up until now, this 65 ILCS 5-3, 13510, which is referring to removal by the mayor of an employee for any reason that is stated at the time of removal. And so, I guess the question being, what I'm interpreting that and question, which maybe was prethought, maybe follow-up of, does that mean that if the mayor removes an appointed person from office, that they are exempt from severance, even without having to meet that level of proof of negligent behavior?
So if I'm tracking correctly, are you speaking about the provision of the municipal code that says the mayor has the discretion to remove somebody if the mayor determines it is in the best interest of the municipality?
Yes.
I think what you would need to show in that situation, though, is a reason that the mayor has determined that is in the best interest, such as for cause. And those, those would be the things that are laid out there in E. So it would be, you know, if the mayor's removing somebody, just because the mayor's decided this person doesn't mesh with the philosophy of the organization anymore, or maybe isn't carrying forward things the way I would want them to, but it hasn't risen to that level of unethical, gross, negligent, I would believe that that would be somebody who would still be entitled to severance. So that still preserves the mayor's ability to remove somebody during this term of contract, but it, again, if you are removed or fired, but not for malfeasance, right, you would be entitled to severance. Because normally, you know, you would finish your term, so that removal provision allows the mayor to stop your term of appointment.
And, you know, if we continue the conversation in the next few weeks, I don't know if you could just double-check that I'm not seeing anything about the, like, unethical things that just says on any charge, whenever the mayor or president is of the opinion that the interest of the municipality demands removal, which is what you're saying, but it's not that specific kind of gross negligent, unethical behavior.
Correct. That section gives an incredible amount of latitude for the mayor. The mayor doesn't have to make particular findings beyond, I believe it's best for the city that you not be here anymore. What's contemplated in E, right, is a significant for cause, misbehavior or negligence by the employee. So I, I do envision them as two distinct things. Now, I'm not saying that you couldn't change this and say, "If the mayor decides for any reason to remove the person, they can." But to me, that undermines the idea of giving somebody some severance protections, because that's really the only protection this person is getting in terms of the contract by way of their position, is a commitment to severance. It's not guaranteeing them anything else anymore vested right. I wouldn't advocate for a contract that gives somebody a property interest beyond that that would supersede what the municipal code had envisioned.
Okay, because ours contract says any employee, the employee shall not be entitled to any form of severance if the employee is removed pursuant to that code.
Right. Okay, I see what you're saying there, and I'm sorry about that.
So just saying, like, the way it's written now, it seems like it doesn't, I mean, nothing's going to supersede the Illinois code, right?
Right.
But so the mayor can choose to remove any appointed person, and it sounds like from that Illinois code, for whatever reason, they just disclose for why they think it's in not the best interest of the municipality, or whatever that wording was. And it seems like ours is also written that that's an exemption from severance for removal for that reason. Is that right?
Yes, that is the, and I'm so sorry, I wasn't tracking on what your question was, but yes, that is the way it is now, but it could be either or, or both. Does that make sense?
Okay, but now, if someone's removed by the mayor for reasons from that Illinois code, they are not entitled to severance, or is the termination of this unethical, gross negligent behavior?
Right.
We've got both in there?
Yes.
Thank you. And then my second question was about automatic renewal, because it had gotten brought up that, well, at the next contract period, this could be renegotiated. And I hadn't, like, looked at that lens from the section yet, but just wondering if the automatic renewal gave room for that kind of renegotiation?
So to clarify, you're talking about section one, term and scope, or what are, which section could you refer me?
That's what I'm trying to figure out as well, I'm sorry. Can't find now where, yeah, on the table, the term says automatic renewal upon reappointment. And now that I'm looking at section one, I'm not seeing that language necessarily written that way. It says, like, "For so long as the city, through mayor and council, appoint the employee, and they choose to accept." I'm not really seeing, uh, maybe different language saying the same thing, but it doesn't explicitly say automatic renewal. I guess just the point being that I wanted to make sure that it doesn't limit renegotiating anything, or any increases in salary, changes to conditions, whatever it might be.
So this lays out actual, the salary parameters, that, how they would be increased, and that's consistent with other city policy in terms of that. So this doesn't contemplate, I think, sitting down and renegotiating the contract every year. This contract stays in effect until and unless the parties- until and unless the parties agree to renegotiate it, but I think what we're envisioning here is just generally would control for the duration of the tenure here, which is why we're going towards the standardized, right, to try and prevent that scenario.
Okay, so this would be for their, the lifetime of their career at the city, right?
Correct.
Someone's brought up earlier that this would be something that would be routinely kind of reevaluated, that that's not how it's set up or envisioned, right?
Reevaluated in what way? Like revisiting and renegotiating?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, that wasn't what I was anticipating when I drafted it like this. I don't know that that's what's contemplated, is like a yearly renegotiation of term. That wasn't what the intention was.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That was just in my head from, I think Mary Alice had brought that one up. Okay, I think those were my two questions. Thank you.
Whoops. Can I relinquish the chair and then ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Mary Alice.
So as I read in section one, it, the second sentence says, "This agreement speaks to the terms and conditions of employees' employment for so long as the city, through its mayor and council, appoints and appropriates for employee to remain in this position." So my, my question is, if something changes, let's just say we get another paid holiday, for example, Election Day, which is no longer a holiday, what, what do the existing council mayor or future council mayors, would they be able to propose changes to this template? Or once we set it in place, it's just in place?
So in section three, sub-paragraph B, sub-paragraph three, we speak to holidays. So the holiday, that's one of the things why...
It was just an example of something that could change, not that I was asking specifically about increasing holidays, if that makes sense.
So I, I guess we tried to contemplate scenarios that if things were changed, the contract could generally flow with it, right? If, if they were not specific to a particular employee was what I was envisioning. So if we change things kind of globally for all people in that position, or all employees, my hope was that, you know, we worded this in a way that would allow that without having to go back and amend any contracts. I think specific changes to a specific employee's work conditions or compensation would require us to look at this contract and make sure we either were still in conformity with it, or did we need to do a revision to it?
So if, let's say that the next city council slash mayor wants to put the residency incentive in, and we took it out, and that was appropriate for all appointed employees, what would happen? How would that be achieved?
I, I would anticipate then that the council would indicate to us that that's what they wanted to do, and we'd revise a template, or we'd go back and note that with the individual employees' agreements.
But what I'm getting at here is, if, if somebody, another group decided that they needed to make an alteration to the standardized template, what is the mechanism that they would be able to do that through?
I, I think you could, I think you could approve an addendum that we could offer to the employees. What I would say, though, is that I don't think another council could come in and impose more restrictions. So you can do things to give more benefits, right, but if we've executed this, and now we're going to say, and by the way, for people we've already executed contracts, you are now required to move here, well, we are bound by this, right? That would open up a renegotiation. Does that make sense?
Okay, I would actually like to call a five-minute recess, and then we can continue discussion, move towards straw poll. So we will recess until 8:17. Okay, at 8:17, I'll call us back from a brief recess. We're currently still in discussion on the item about standard employment agreements for appointed positions. I think we're getting pretty close to straw poll. Any other discussion or other things missing from our straw poll? Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, I just would say I'm, I'm happy to participate in the, the straw poll, but ultimately may still not vote to move this forward, just because, like I said, I would like more time with it, so making that note.
Thank you. Also clarify for staff, and I guess the council, I didn't have on my list the language about indemnification chapter, but I thought that was a pretty straightforward, just technical correction. I'm okay with that. And then about considering any specificity on transition of duty. I guess we don't really have anything specific, but if we wanted to consider thinking of something, if we wanted to add that to our straw poll. All right, I'll add it. Any others? Okay, so I'll just go through one more time my list, and I can try and stick to this order. So I have first, remove retroactive severance accumulation for current employees. Second, remove residency incentive from all contracts, from my understanding what was proposed this round. Reduce severance to 16 weeks max. That was three. Sorry, I'll number these. Four, this contract applying to all full-time permanent appointees, not interim, temporary, special, limited term, et cetera. Number five, only up to the mayor's discretion for the insertable language. And then six, consider specificity on transition of duty language. Okay, so number one, remove retroactive severance accumulation for current employees. All in favor? Two, three, four, and Chandra, you mind just telling us yours? I think we got the yeses.
Yes.
That's all. Six of us just lost count. Number two, remove residency incentive. Hands up for yes? Five, and Chandra?
Yes.
Number three, reduce severance to 16 weeks max. Hands up for yes? Four, and Chandra?
Yes.
Five in favor there. I called no. Number four, applies to all full-time permanent appointees, not any wording on limited or interim. Hands up for yes?
Yeah.
Five, and Chandra, that's six yeses. And number five, the mayor's discretion applies only to the insertable language in the contracts?
Could you explain that one to me again?
Yes. Meaning that we had this written that this is kind of standard, but it's, I guess it's not even really in the contract, it's maybe more in the resolution. Section two says that authorize the mayor or designate to negotiate specific terms, enter into the contract, and we had talked about that that would be kind of at the discretion of the mayor to negotiate specific terms, and just clarifying, like, what that means. And I guess what I'm calling the insertable sections are the things that are in brackets in italic size that say position, salary, time period, if it was an existing position, change this, if there's a vehicle, do this kind of thing, just not outside of the main meat of it where you're changing, like sick leave or vacation, or severance, or any of the meat of it that would apply to anyone else. Does that clarify? Okay, so straw poll.
Are you, are you asking me? I, I think, I think I understand the intention.
So insertable in brackets in italics. I think things that are pretty obvious in the document where it says, or this, insert this. Okay, so this one is for the mayor's discretion for negotiating those contracts only with the kind of insertable language. In favor of that? Five, and Chandra is six? And then last is consider more specific language on the transition of duty. In favor with hands? Sorry, I think some questions about clarifying that one. Yes, I guess just to consider. So before, if we discuss this again, for council and staff to consider something that might be reasonable as far as time period, or what would qualify that being fulfilled?
Section is that, please?
Is it 14? Yep. Yes, Michelle?
It is 14 in one document, and 14 in the other document is different, because, so I appreciate that. That is clarification. That would be helpful to me. Now, in terms of standard transition language, which is in the other appointees' contract, that's very concise, I can, I can bulk that out. I can make that more robust. I have some thoughts on that. The one that confuses me, that I'd be grateful for some guidance on, is if we're talking about section 14 in the city administrator or department head contract. I think that's on the bottom of page seven. That was where we'd envisioned some, some idea that the mayor could work with the department head or the city administrator about a transition period in terms of agreement. So with, on the one hand, I have, I can come up with some pretty standardized language about what it means to assist with a transition, but it was that section 14 on page seven that we were trying to leave a little more flexibility on. So if you could just clarify for me which one or both that you're seeking clarification on, and then if it was section 14 on the department head and city administrator document, what you had envisioned?
So I think I was referring to the section 14 on, I'm referring to the transition of duties and responsibilities. So it's 14 on the other employees, it's 15 on city administrator and some department heads, right?
Okay, yes. I have ideas, then I can make that if you'd like. I have some language I can tender that would make it a little more robust, that speaks to scenarios of, like, if, if we're sued and we need to bring you back for under subpoena or different things like that, if those are some of the things you're thinking about. We don't generally do timeframes necessarily on things like that, because they're very speculative, but if you had suggested timeframes on, you know, how long, I understand what you're saying about somebody being on the hook for, I'd happily receive any guidance on that.
So I think that's what I was getting at, was interested in hearing what Michelle would propose in any way that we could make that a little more specific. Is that clear on that? Straw poll, so considering specific language that would be proposed by Michelle for any more specific language on the section 14 slash 15, transition of duties and responsibilities. Clear on that? Okay, hands up for yes? Five, and Chandra? Okay, thank you. Looks like that was majority in agreement with all of those changes. Yes.
Can I ask for a straw poll on the final vote before we take it?
A straw poll on the final vote before we vote?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, can we do that?
Yes.
Just to gauge interest, or I guess what's your...
To gauge the temperature of whether or not this will go forward or not. The, the motion that I had made was that to move this to city council with no recommendation.
I see, so someone could have a chance to maybe keep it in cow, or make another motion, or something like that?
I could remove my motion, yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that? Any thoughts on it? Yeah, Jaya?
I'm not opposed to that either. I, I think it could be interesting to, to see where, where people are, because I can't explain. I'm just going to explain, I, I think, I think this is a lot of really good progress, and, you know, I recognize some of this is because I was gone for a couple of weeks and I'm still playing catch-up. I personally would prefer to keep it in committee poll, just to give a little bit more time for review and see if there's any feedback from constituents, but I also appreciate that you did make the motion without a recommendation, so that gives a week. I would just prefer to have two weeks.
James?
I, I guess I will point out that if we forward it to council, and we get to council next week, and it's not been enough time, we can send it back to committee. So, I mean, there's, that is an option, other than just keeping, because we kept it in committee one, one cycle because of lack of council members being present and the need to discuss it in much more detail further, but there was something we had... But there was something we had in March that was in committee of the whole, went to council, got sent back to committee of the whole, went to council. I mean, we, it's not guaranteed that we have to vote on it next Monday if we let it go on to council. But we could if we do let it go to council. If we don't send it to council, then we're guaranteed not to take another action for two weeks and then finalize it for three weeks.
Okay. So yes, we could do a straw poll on if we are ready to move from committee of the whole to council tonight. So yes vote would be yes, you're ready to move to council, no being not.
And if I could clarify, a yes vote means with the changes we have all agreed to with five or six people in alignment, right?
Yes.
Would we support it with moving to council with those changes?
Yes, and I think procedurally we'll need to maybe officially amend, but I think the straw poll's been pretty clear. Yeah, Michelle?
I apologize, and I, to a question that you had regarding the severance section paragraph E. Were you asking to see any changes to that? And I apologize for being so foggy when you were asking your question and me not tracking because I made that answer way more painful than it needed to be. But I guess specifically, would you like that same language or had you wanted to remove one of those provisions for the exception to severance?
I think keep as is, I think I was just needing to understand how it was written and what that code was and yeah. It just gets complicated. So yeah, I think we're good, thank you. Okay, so straw poll, yes, meaning you're ready to move this to council with the straw poll changes? No being you are not ready to move this to council tonight. So yes, ready to move to council? You and Chandra? You just want to tell us if you're a yes or no?
No.
And other noes, I guess implied, but. So that would be for not ready to move to council, no to yes. Yes, James?
Then I would like to make a motion to send this to the committee of the whole in two weeks for further discussion.
Okay, so that was moved by James to keep in Cal, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion on that motion?
Just a procedural one?
Yes.
Does, did the old motion need to be?
I, I was gonna say, I was just gonna change my motion to be that, but we technically still need to vote on the original motion. So can I pull my motion and then we'll let James stand? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll defer to the clerk, sorry to put you on the spot there. Because we did have, to clarify here too, if I can, Chair, we did have a motion on the floor. And we did a bunch of straw polls, we said we weren't ready, and now we have another motion and second on the floor. So I may have let an extra motion that wasn't allowed, I'll look to clerk for how to handle this, please.
Yes, I do believe the first original motion must be resolved before a new one.
Can, can I? To make it clean, I can just remove my motion?
I think that would be.
And as long as my second is agreeable, then the next motion can be.
Okay, so we have the original motion to move to council with no recommendation has been removed, seconding that removal by James. Yes, I think, yes. And we did already throw out a motion to keep in Cal by James, seconded by Mary Alice.
I'll re-initiate that.
Re-seconded just for dotting our eyes?
Re-seconded that, yes.
Alright, I think we're good, hopefully. Alright, any other discussion on that? Ready to vote on moving it to keep in Cal? Could we have a straw poll, or I mean a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quinzenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes to keep in committee of the whole, thank you all. And moving on to new business, we have next resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine dash zero six three R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Lincoln Avenue, Washer Drive to Killarney Street, road diet demonstration.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council. So this is another one of these MFT resolutions that follows on a project that was in the capital improvement plan. As you may recall, we did a, a group of these back in May when we were getting the capital improvement plan, you know, put together. The reason why this one is coming up now is because as this project was progressing, we were splitting it into different pieces, so that is why that wasn't included earlier in May. I'm gonna pull up the packet real quick just to give the visual here. On thirty. Okay, bear with me for one sec. Okay, there we go. So we were talking about a part of the Lincoln Avenue, Washer to Killarney project. We're specifically talking about a road diet demonstration that we've received a Safe Street and Roads for All grant to fund. And when I say a demonstration, I mean this is getting together the design for this road diet, which is reducing the number of travel lanes from four travel lanes to three. The images shown on the screen show two proposed configurations for that road diet. And the demonstration would simply re-stripe the existing pavement to essentially test out this configuration under live traffic for a term, say, three months, for example. As a way for us to, you know, observe traffic data during that period to test, say, test our hypotheses about what effect this might have, not on, not just on traffic going down this corridor, but also regional traffic, are people making different decisions because of the change to the street about how they get around the area? And of course, you know, safety impacts, which is the kind of primary driver for this is for improving safety along the corridor. And so that's what this is for, this two hundred thousand dollars is the budget for re-striping the road temporarily and then returning it to its existing condition. And so this, you know, what is specifically before council, of course, is a, an MFT resolution to appropriate this amount in our MFT account that would get reviewed and approved by I-DOT. Is there, are there any questions?
Questions, Chris?
Thanks, John. God forbid, but temporary re-striping, experiment. What happens if there's an accident? Are we liable?
I would say as liable as we are today with the permanent striping that we have and traffic control that we have on the road, yes.
I mean, but when we deliberately change things to experiment, I mean, doesn't that increase, I mean, could we be more blamed than just the usual standard striping? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do understand. And I guess what is going to have to happen before we do that, we'll have a clearances and studies that have to go through the state DOT, plans approved by the DOT before we can do this, you know, including, you know, whatever impacts might make to intersections. And so we're gonna go through a similar type of rigor before, you know, to be able to even do this, I guess, not, not the full, you know, rigor of the final design, but.
But there are standards of safety when you conduct one of these experiments, right?
Definitely, definitely.
I, okay, thanks. I just never heard of the, of experimenting with striping, but go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, and, and maybe if it would help to think about it like this, because what we're doing at the same time is we have our consultant going through and doing the phase one engineering now where they're going to come up with this preliminary design, you know, using the appropriate taper rates and other ways of transitioning traffic based on the design speed. They're going to run traffic simulations of how we expect this change would impact traffic compared to the existing conditions. What the nice thing is we're gonna be able to then see, well, what, what does happen? Like, you know, this is kind of an opportunity, I think that's more of the standard of practice right now as you run Synchro as the software, but you run analytical traffic models to try to see what happens with it. This would be a little more, a little better. Sorry.
Yes, Mary Alice?
So I have some preconceived notions in terms of whether or not this is a good idea or a bad idea. But regardless, I'm a fan of collecting data. And so my question to you is what kinds of data will be used to evaluate this?
Sure. What we'll have is data before and after, which, you know, it takes into account the number of vehicles making the different turning movements, overall volume of traffic on the corridor. We also are gonna have data to help us understand the volume of traffic that's going on different, you know, routes in the network nearby, say Interstate seventy-four. Can we see it, do we notice a change in pattern in other arterial routes that seems to suggest that people are taking other routes in the network because of the change we made here?
How do you collect that data?
That data is made available through, through cellphone Bluetooth data.
Okay, so we're using people's pings on their cell network?
They're, they're, you know, anonymous, you know, here's a cellphone moving in a vehicle kind of thing.
Alright, and then you had alluded that it would be like three months. I'm wondering if it could be a little bit longer given that we have a change in season, we have change in football games, we have lots of different things that come. So I would like to.
And that's, that's me kind of going off the cuff, I like your, your suggestions though. I mean, what we want to do is we want to catch a good window where we get.
Exactly, with all different kinds of traffic, which would be.
It'd be good to see a stress test.
Yes.
In a way, yes.
So maybe ending at the end of January, I don't know when, how long it would take you to get in place, but you would have spring coming back in, you'd have winter, I don't know when, how long would it take to get set up if it's approved?
Well, I would say the earliest we'd be able to get it moving would be, I think the earliest it would likely would be fall of twenty twenty-five because.
Oh, well, okay.
The DOT, the DOT, we're gonna have to go through a number of steps before we're gonna be allowed to do this. But yeah, I would say kind of conventional wisdom would be, let's make sure we get it either in the fall or the spring when you advise in session, you know, just kind of getting all those, we catching the move-in, you know, period.
Catch the move-in, catch the football games, catch the holiday traffic. Yeah, yeah, so I, I think more than three months would be my recommendation, thank you.
Make a note, yeah, thank you.
James?
Okay, I have a mixture of follow-ups to the other questions. Are there traffic signal reconfigurations that are gonna have to happen to make this function?
What we just may need to do is to, you know, configure, you kind of slide signal heads around because what you'd like to have is the signal head line up with the lane of traffic. And to ensure we have the correct kind of detection in that temporary configuration. Say if there are detector loops now, we may need to, you know, do a video detection instead.
Okay, and then a variation on Mary Alice's question is what are we hoping to learn by doing this? Are we hoping to learn that the traffic that uses this road can adapt to this change? Are we hoping to learn that with this change, people adapt and stop using the road? I mean, what, what's, what are we hoping to learn from this?
I think the short of it is that, you know, of course, we'd love to see that there are like safety improvements that were visible within this, you know, window. That may or may not be because it'd be a short enough observation period, it might be hard to, you know, to see. I, I think the big question maybe goes to what Mary Alice might have been alluding to is that a road diet sounds like a nice idea. Are you gonna create bottlenecks or problems, you know, by trying to shove the traffic in this, you know, in fewer lanes? And so that's kind of, I think the, the big underlying question is, can we be comfortable we're gonna do this and not cause traffic problems in the network by doing so?
And then the final question along those lines is, will there be exit criteria if we start to see impacts that we think are either dangerous, problematic? Is there a way, if we said we're gonna do this for four months and a month into it, it's, do we have criteria that we would say, this is going badly, we need to undo it?
Yeah. There would definitely be some criteria, I mean, we've not developed yet, but, you know, we talk about the levels of service of traffic going through an intersection if we're having essentially, you know, a lot of traffic failures that are unacceptable or creating unsafe conditions. I think safety would be the primary driver for me. If we were creating unsafe conditions, that could potentially be a cause for us to, you know, prematurely back off.
So in addition to the cell pings, the anonymous tracking of your phone, will there be interviews with the neighborhood? Because this goes through a neighborhood to see how it's impacting the people who live in this area? As opposed to the people that are just buzzing by?
That's a great, that's a great point. And I, to me, I also see that as a, a real benefit to doing this demonstration is because this is going to be really, a really direct way to get public input. And, and that is an important part of what we're trying to accomplish here. I know I've had early conversations with some of the neighborhood leaders up in this area to want to get them, you know, help us identify good stakeholders that we can engage in this, you know, before we do the demonstration, you know, understand how it's going, you know, during the process. So those kind of things, yeah, I think it, I mean, nothing, nothing can get your attention like having to drive down a road that looks differently and feels differently. So, yep.
Thank you.
Is there a question? Mary Alice? Oh, yeah, Chandra, why don't you go ahead?
So we did get an email earlier this evening about this road diet. And it seems like there is one lane that gets sort of, becomes a parking waiting area for the food bank over there, and I'm not sure if you had noticed that in, in your leading up to, to this proposal. And I'm not, and if they're taking up one whole lane and we reduce it by one lane, how does that impact traffic more immediately? I mean, I understand we can, I don't know if there's a different way to help the cars line up for the food pantry or, or what it is, but it seems like they listed that they, they served over four hundred families last week. And so I can just imagine the road being, you know, essentially at a standstill or unusable if we take a lane away.
Yes, yeah, and that, and you're correct, that is a, the very specific, you know, very, very important and specific concern for how, how the operations of that food bank, you know, can spill over into the traffic. And so we'll have to consider that carefully, for sure.
Mary Alice?
So I realize that we've moved the new fire station to Bradley instead of to be on Lincoln, but has the fire department weighed in on this road diet concept? Because they, that's a major street for them to go down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know I've gotten input from the fire department in the past about this and that, you know. about this, and that, you know, they've got their, their concerns about the, being able to move, you know, through this. Obviously, we have to, we're going to definitely balance the movement of emergency vehicles, you know, with the other safety considerations we've got. I think the center two-way left turn lane, you know, which is, you know, generally would not be occupied by people, except that maybe an intersection would be, you know, a good opportunity for, say, a vehicle wanting to move down the corridor, you know, without interference of other traffic.
What James was saying, is there a time that you pull the plug? Certainly, if our emergency vehicles can't get to places, that's the time to pull the plug and say, this is not, not going to work for this area.
Mm-hmm, understood.
And I had one. John, can you remind us on the need for this? Is this road condition or pedestrian and bicycle navigability in particular? Could you remind us kind of what's the, I guess as James was saying, some of the motivation, but especially just looking at, you know, another $7 million over that in the next couple of years of, could you remind us the need and goals for this again?
Sure, sure. I'd say the large part of that cost is going to be just rehabilitating and maintaining the pavement that's there. That's a lot of where the cost is. The idea of reconfiguring the road is coming from the high incidence of crashes that have been happening in recent years. This is the, one of the worst performing corridors in our region. It was in the KUAT's Urban Area Safety Study, ranked as one of the highest priority sectors or segments, sorry, of a road, based on its crash history. And one, some of the, you know, analysis, analysis of the type of crashes we were having on this road pointed us to moving to a three-lane configuration versus a four-lane configuration could offer benefits of reducing the number of rear-end crashes that we might see, because when you have that, basically when you have an odd number of lanes and you have that center lane that people can get into for turning movements, it can kind of reduce the number of conflicts you get where vehicles stop trying to turn, vehicles behind them are running into them. And so, you know, a lot of this is driven by vehicle safety, also driven by a desire for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in this corridor, which, you know, we don't have bicycle accommodations along this corridor. And really, you know, the reason we were awarded an SS 4A grant, and, you know, this was like, you know, one, one part of the region's application that was awarded, you know, the objectives of this project, kind of the safety objectives, connectivity, the, the characteristics of the area of the city it was going through all checked the boxes for this grant in a way that was, you know, favorable for it.
Chris?
Maybe I forgot how to drive, John, but that third, that third center lane, the turn lane, are both directions going to be using it?
Yes.
So how do you avoid, I see that. So how do we avoid a, when both coming from different directions want to use, I guess there's, I don't know, how to explain that?
Sure. You know, that'll happen. I know I've encountered that at times, too, and there may be periods of like, you know, I may have to come back around to make my turn because there was people, you know, trying to make an opposing turning movement in the same, same lane, yes. That, that can happen.
The other thing, too, I guess, related to what James and Mary Alice are talking about, is if someone's in that lane trying to turn, traffic's a little heavy on both sides, and now the fire truck needs to get around all this mess, what if it, you know, the fire trucks or the ambulances can't use that center lane because there's people stuck, and they can't get out of it because, I don't know. I guess we're just going to find out, right? I mean, that's why we're having the experiment, but wow.
Can I, can I weigh in on that a little bit?
Please, please.
Having passed conversations with the fire service, they're going to make their way through. That's essentially what they've assured me. They, we have school zones that block full streets at times, and their answer is, we're going to get through one way or another. Typically, people see them coming, they, they find a way to yield and get over, and people get through those.
So we deal with this all the time?
Yeah, and their, their premise on a school zone related in the discussion we had recently is they weren't worried about it. So I would suspect a very similar response from them, but we can check in with them.
Other questions? I had another one about crossings and bus turnouts. Is that part of any of this in this section, especially, it looks like this covers quite a few bus points and some of the big apartment complexes?
Yeah, yeah, Grace, thank you. You reminded me of some of the better, better characteristics that we're looking for, is that one of the worst things we have going on in this quarter right now is we have, I mean, it's great that we have a lot of bus traffic, bus transit ridership up there, but we'll have people getting off a bus stop on the east side of the road and having no protected crosswalk. They're between, they might get off between Bradley and the interstate, and there's no protected crosswalk for them, and so they're walking across four lanes of traffic to get to their apartment. And so what this does with the three-lane configuration, we'd be able to introduce new, new crosswalks, pedestrian crosswalks mid-block with enhanced crossing measures. The center, the center turn lane allows you to introduce a refuge island, so that people have to just cross one lane, they can stop in the median, and then they can cross the other lane when they're able to. So a huge benefit for pedestrians who need to get across Lincoln, this new configuration, yes.
Oops, is that a protected median in this temporary one?
I would, I would say, we'll, we'll have to see. I'm not sure that we're going to try to demo the full, like, protected crosswalks, because like you say, like, we may be able to, and just use some, you know, temporary raised bumpers or something like that to kind of mimic the conditions. That's a detail that we just haven't quite worked out yet, but yeah.
And what about bus turnouts?
Yes, we're considering them, and I know from conversations like we've been having on the Lincoln Avenue corridor study, which you guys can look forward to, I want to say, coming up in November, you know, if we're able to introduce those, I know MTD is in favor of them. It's not always necessarily a, we must have that, and part of that will depend on, you know, are we going to have bike lanes on the street, or are we going to have a shared-use path off to the, to the side? Because that can impact how we, how we want to do that, but where we can, as right of way, we'll allow, introduce a bus turnout. I think that's, you know, a good practice that we can do.
Thanks. Other questions? Shandra, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
If I could ask, Shandra, did you say they, the food bank served over 400 families? And was that in a day, in a week?
That, she said last week.
Last week, okay.
So, yeah, I would assume a week, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I have the last two questions. And so you're saying this will be 220,000 is what we're asking in this resolution for temporary restriping and then removing those stripes for the section. Is that right?
Right, right.
And is there more to that, as in the resurfacing? Does that, does this include any of the study part of that period?
It does not. This, and part of that is that, say, we hire a contractor to do this, striping and then removal, they're also going to have to maintain the, you know, temporary markings during the demonstration. So, you know, we may, we may use some temporary traffic control devices like drums or, you know, delineators or some things like that that may require maintenance. And so that's, where part of this cost I expect is just maintaining the, the configuration while it's in effect.
And then the plan is to remove it even if there are positive results, as that is the road needs to have repaired in general?
Because where this, yes, we'll, we'll restore it to the current conditions because we will have not completed the design process to where we could make the permanent change. This is, our intention is that this will essentially be a, another data point that will feed into our analysis, our study, to come to the conclusion like this is the recommended design, and, you know, so forth. And, you know, we want to, you know, get the public input and stuff before we finalize as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or motion?
I've got one more question. John, you said getting the public's input during this sort of trial testing period, how would they be able to, I guess, give that feedback?
I don't have the details worked out yet. My anticipation is there'd be public meetings, but I'd also, you know, suspect that there'd be, I mean, aside from my email, it might be, this might be a good opportunity for us to set up a good website for collecting feedback on kind of a, you know, high-visibility demonstration like this.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And, sorry, that made me think of one more. Could you, maybe you said, and I didn't catch, is this related to a grant, or this was just budgeted from motor fuel fund?
It is the, we're receiving a $200,000 grant from the federal government through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program.
Okay, so this is all grant-funded that we're approving here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's the, we'll pay this money upfront and then get reimbursed by the grant.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions or motion? Yes, Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion. I'll move Resolution Number 2024-09-063R, Resolution for Improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Lincoln Avenue, Washer Drive, to Killarney Street Road Diet Demonstration, City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Oh, second. Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya for City Council with recommendation approval for regular agenda, unspecified. Discussion? James?
I do think it's important to have at least some of potential exit criteria defined before we do this. I know this is a long way away, but, because we have to jump through all the hoops with the state and such, but I do think having, looking ahead to what might consider, make us consider stopping the process, kind of define before we go into it.
Jaya?
I would agree with that. I think this is a good opportunity to test and see if this could work, but having an exit plan makes sense, and also really seeing what is the impact with the food bank being there. I think it probably is going to require some extra collaboration and planning to make sure that all those people still get served.
Chris?
Just an idea. I wonder, on the heels of the comprehensive plan, or imagine Urbana meetings, maybe work with community development, particularly Anaria, to organize some town halls, or somehow create, collect feedback somehow. Just, just an idea.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Shandra, any discussion?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and Rafael, would you mind doing a roll call, just since we've got some remote and just make it clear?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colossity?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. On to City Council, and our next item is Ordinance Number 2024-09-030, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Sections 22 through 31, and 22 through 34, Local Motor Fuel Taxes.
So what you have before you tonight is a draft of an ordinance, which, which leaves some details undefined. A few weeks ago, Tim kind of made the case for why this is needed, but I do want to reiterate what he said, which is, even with any of these increases, this is not enough to improve the condition of our roads. This is basically going to slow the deterioration, which is unfortunate, but it is what it is. I provided a chart in the memo, and there, there you can see the current five-cent rate, the four options that Tim shared a few weeks ago, and then after some internal discussion, we provided five, five different other options that you might wish to consider that, that have various levels of incremental increase, and those are in blue at the bottom of the chart, and you can see for each one, the estimated revenue over 10 years, the average annual, the increase, and then the increments at each step, and then the annual impact on an average driver, and also the monthly impact on an average driver at each of those steps. So I also want to mention, as usual, we, we look at fairness, impacts on behavior, cost of administration when we're assessing revenue sources. In terms of fairness, taxes based on consumption, like, like the motor fuel tax, tend to have a greater impact on lower-income individuals and families. However, in this case, the impact of the suggested increases, even the highest option, is $4.12 monthly, which is somewhat modest. In terms of behavior, one, one thing we assess, because, because we have a, have neighbors here, is, you know, whether people are likely to decide to go and, you know, purchase their motor fuel tax elsewhere. We don't think that will be the case, but since, since the last discussion, specifically you were focusing on incremental increases, if we see that starting to happen, there would be an opportunity to reevaluate our strategy. Finally, on this particular tax, in terms of cost of, cost of administration, it's very low, because we already collect a local motor fuel tax, so really, the, the workload on the finance side is just a matter of making sure we do appropriate notifications, letting, letting all the businesses that collect the tax know what's happening, providing them new forms, but we're already processing those returns, and so there's no additional work on an ongoing basis. So my, my suggestion is that, that you maybe focus on the, the new options that we provided, maybe one of those looks acceptable, maybe there's something a little bit different you would like to do, and then for the, assuming you arrive at a, a clear recommendation, then for next week's council meeting, I can provide a final ordinance for the packet. Is there anything you want to add?
No, just, I would just, you know, advocate for an adjustment again. You know, I think public infrastructure is something that, you know, it's a hard thing to get your arms around, and it takes a long time to deteriorate, and, you know, we're in a position now where we have better tools and information that are showing us the trends that we didn't have 20 years ago. And for that reason, you know, I would advocate for this. I would advocate for taking whatever step you guys feel is appropriate. We understand this is not going to close the entire gap for us, but, you know, over time, with the introduction of EVs and then other things of that nature, it'll become a less dependent source over the years, and we recognize that really the federal and the state government are going to have to look at their funding sources for roadways as well, and we'll have to continue to look at that over this time as well.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, James?
Thank you for the, for the additional information, additional options. I appreciate the, the new options that were added to this, this list. I did appreciate the update on the diesel fuel, which turned out kind of like what we expected. I did appreciate the update on the diesel fuel, which turned out kind of like what we expected. But I did want to mention for the benefit of council and others that in the state of Illinois, diesel fuel is already taxed at seven and a half cents more per gallon on the state level. So there's a, there's an additional charge for diesel fuel which contributes to it being more expensive right now than gasoline, which hasn't always been the case. So looking at, looking at the choices, I think, I don't have any further questions, so I'll save the rest for discussion.
Any other questions? Shandra, did you have a question?
No, thank you.
I think I just have one. Looking at the markup version D now, page 40 of our packet for today, that, I just read, it says, "The ultimate incident of and liability for payment of the tax is to be borne to the retail purchaser of the motor fuel. Nothing in this article shall be construed to impose a tax upon the occupation of persons engaged in the retail sale of motor fuel." I didn't know if we could have more layman terms. I'm imagining that this is supposed to be on the big company purchaser of the bulk fuel rather than the individual gas station retailer or pass to the customer. Is that what this is saying?
What that's saying is it's on the customer. The retailer collects it from the customer and then pays it to the city.
Oh, so the purchaser of motor fuel, you're not talking about upstream, you're talking about downstream, the individual?
Correct. So when I, when I, when I fill up my car at the gas station right here, that tax is assessed to me. The retailer holds it and then pays it to the city.
Okay. And so it is up to the retailer to keep track of all that and pay to the city. But we're explicitly, expressly writing that we know that they're going to, the consumer is going to pay that tax directly.
Correct.
Retailer sends it to the city. Okay, thank you. Questions? Any motion to start some discussion?
Well, I, I'm happy to make a motion. I just, well, I'll tell you what, I'll just make a motion. You guys can disagree with me. I will move ordinance number 2024-09-030, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Sections 22, 31, and 23, 34, with the 7.5 slash 10 slash 12.5 cents and then CIP option to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James to City Council on regular agenda, did you say?
Yes, please.
And which option, could you restate which option?
Sure. The option, the first option, which is 7.5, so 7.5 and then 10 cents and then 12.5 cents and then index to the Consumer Price Index. That's the third from the bottom.
Any discussion? Yes, James?
Yeah, I, I do, I think when we discussed this previously, there was a request from council to have this step in more gradually rather than a doubling and further increases. I think the options eight, nine, and 10 represent that, that mindset that we need to be careful about the increase and, and its impact and not try to get it all at once. And I, and I am, while I would entertain discussion of option nine or 10 as well, I, my, my first choice would have been option number eight, which Mary Alice has chosen to go forward with. So I would support that.
Ms. Mary Alice?
Yeah, I, I would agree with James. I'm happy to see these options on the table for us to be able to stagger this. It's, it's unfortunate that we haven't raised it in a while, which means it hasn't caught up with the Consumer Price Index. And so it seems like a really big jump. But rather than doing all of that at once, I think this gives the opportunity for it to be gradually increased. And, and just so that the public is aware that with this proposal, the impact, the monthly impact for each year would be $1.23 per month for the first year, $2.45 per month for the second year, and $3.68 for the third year.
Shandra, do you have any discussion?
No.
Some. If someone would mind taking the chair, Mary Alice?
I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I agree with what a lot of, has been said here. I guess backing up, I don't enjoy having to increase taxes on our residents. And I think that, you know, no one does, and I understand the need for it because also needing the road repairs. And so I think that this is unfortunately necessary and as reasonable as we can. I agree with the option of, that was proposed, except for moving to adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index in perpetuity after that. I'm uncomfortable with setting that as the standard moving forward. I think that we're already having, this would be for seven and a half, 10 years out. How long are these out? I guess that option was 2.5 cents for three years. And is that starting in 2025?
So that'd be starting January 1, 2025, then the next increase, 1.126, 1.127, and then CPI starting 1.128.
Okay, so you're saying each year increasing that much. Okay. I was reading times three years in my head as times every three years.
Yeah, each year.
So each year for three years. Okay. So we're only talking three years out. Yeah, I just, for some reason, I, yeah, I feel like concerns about out of our hands, about a lot of uncertainty about what can happen with Consumer Price Index and having that be just what it is in perpetuity afterwards. Yes, did you have a?
Oh, but I'm chair.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Elizabeth.
So, so if I could, just, just in case it helps, that the Federal Reserve's long-term forecast for the rate of inflation, CPI, is that it will average about two and a half percent a year. I don't know if that helps you to put it into context. It may be higher some years and lower others. But over the long term, we expect about two and a half percent inflation.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to add to that. That was also a reason, the National Highway Construction Cost Index that you guys have heard about and inflating so rapidly, we, we opted not to propose that because this is a little bit more conservative in its growth.
Thank you. So, yeah, I appreciate that clarification and still feel just a little uncomfortable having it out of our hands. As far as my understanding with other city fees, that's something that's reevaluated. Are any of our other city fees set on a CPI adjustment automatically?
I'm not thinking of any off the top of my head, but I, but I will say, we do update the fee schedule annually. And generally, when we do that, we're capturing our cost increases, which in that case are primarily wages, right? Because the fees pay for work that city employees do. And so two and a half percent, I don't think would, would, two and a half percent on average, I don't think would exceed the increases we would expect to see in other city fees.
Thank you. So again, yeah, I still just feel uncomfortable with that. I would rather just evaluate it on an annual basis as we do with other fees on that schedule. I think it's reasonable, you know, 2.5% per year on average, but we have extreme years. I think that COVID was an example of that, when things may have gone up and when we as a city didn't increase some of the fees for that time because of those reasons. So I'm just a little concerned about something being automatic and out of our hands. I know we can reevaluate it, but for me, it makes sense to just reevaluate it with our other fees. We can see what the CPI was that year. And then also would like to just throw out ideas, hopes of some other kinds of fees and taxes, like on disposable bags.
Would you like the chair back?
Uh, yes, I'll take it back.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. And can I let, did Elizabeth have a response or a comment on that?
Just a clarification. This is a tax, not a fee. So this would not be addressed in the fee schedule. If we wanted to reevaluate this annually, we'd have to bring an ordinance to amend the code each year.
Thank you for the clarification. And yes, Mary Alice?
So I, I think it's important that we do use the CIP, but I do hear your concerns. And so I'd like to propose just a cap, like it will never go over X percentage in a year. Right? So if your concern is with inflation skyrocketing, then it would be the CIP up to whatever percentage the council decides, whether it's 5%, 4%, 7%, whatever. But that would hopefully alleviate some of that large fluctuation. That would be my suggestion.
Chris?
Well, for everyone that ever yells at me about the roads are never any good in Urbana, here's your chance. User fee makes perfect sense. Amount is reasonable, even for poor people, I think. My concern going forward, and this is another conversation for another day, and that is who gets to work. And I'm still concerned about the lack of a procurement policy in Urbana, and I hope we can get that fixed someday. So, thanks.
Any other discussion? Uh, Shandra, anything else to add?
No, I think the points I had in my head were, were covered already. Thank you.
So we have motion on the floor to send this to council on regular agenda with the option with fees of 7.5, 10, and 12.5 cents, then to CPI. Yes, James?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that CPI portion to be CPI or 5%, whichever is lower.
I'll second that.
Okay, so amended by, moved to amend by James, seconded by Mary Alice. To amend where after the third year, it would be CPI adjustment or 5%, the lesser of the two, essentially saying max at 5% depending on however we want to word it. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can vote on that amendment to capping at 5% max for CPI. And Rafael, would you mind doing a straw poll, please? Or I mean a roll call?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colossetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes to amend that portion. And now back to the main ordinance as amended. Any last discussion? Would you mind giving us one more, or not one more, but another roll call, please, Rafael?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colossetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. And that motion passes. Moving on to City Council. And our last item for tonight under new business is ordinance number 2024-09-031, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number one omnibus.
So this is your first budget amendment for the new fiscal year, fiscal year 2025. Fairly straightforward. There are a couple of changes in the general fund, including some additional funds for storm cleanup related to a windstorm that occurred in July. And also when the, you had talked about the ladder truck and needing some funds for repairs for that. Well, when it got there, of course, and they got into it, they realized, as often happens with repairs on vehicles, it needed some additional work. So that would require an additional $54,198. There are a number of changes related to various capital improvement projects, including the Equity and Quality of Life Project. Those are mostly just rebudgets, just rolling money forward that wasn't encumbered before June 30th. There was no purchase order issued. And so now that will be spent in the current fiscal year because it was not spent in last fiscal year. There is also in the capital improvement fund, there's a, a, a grant for streetlights. So you see $77,000 coming in and going out again in Central Tiff, an adjustment for landscaping at the Boneyard Creek. And then again, you see the additional expense for the ladder truck and the Equipment Services Fund because that passes through, that's, that's paid by the fire department to the Equipment Service Fund, who then actually pays for the repair. So I think this one's pretty straightforward, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions? Chris?
Not for you, Elizabeth, but more for Tim. I noticed $15,000 for the landscaping in the Boneyard Creek. That's just the vegetation, is that correct? When we say landscaping, that's plants and bushes and things like that?
Yes, yeah. We, we maintain a budget for that. And the issue was we inadvertently budgeted less than what we typically are doing.
My question is, Tim, is we desperately need some kind of like power washing on some of the stonework down there. Is that, I mean, that's maybe not, that may be outside the bounds of this conversation tonight, but I'd like to see if we can address some of the graffiti down there.
Yeah, and, and we've done that in the past. So historically, the issue is we spend thousands of dollars doing it, undoing it one week and the next week it's back.
Yeah.
We, you know, I proposed with our, our arts program to paint a mural down there, which I think many of you have probably seen down there, with an idea of potentially addressing it on an annual basis with something like that, where annually, we could contribute some kind of funds to paint over it versus us trying to scrub it away and just to have it re-tagged. And honestly, the, in my opinion, I think the mural actually lasted longer than when we've get clean, given them a blank surface. I actually was proclaiming about how great it was and that nobody had graffitied it and everything. And boom, the next week I go down there and people graffitied it, of course. But it did, I would say it went at least a couple of months without being blemished. So there was that. But, you know, I, I think without more activity down there, things of that nature, it's, it, it's going to be a constant issue with this.
It is. It, and I like the idea of murals covering up stuff. And that's particularly under the street and in the tunnel, under the tracks. However, what I'm, what I'm thinking of a power washing is there's some, in some of the auxiliary stonework that isn't good drawing, let's call it, or it's smaller, more nuisance oriented stuff that I'm just wondering if we could clean up some of the steps and some of the areas. Whereas it seems like the tunnels, the, under the street and the tunnel is kind of a formal art space that SIP Yard functioned as. And I think we're, I'm okay with that continuing. But maybe clean up some of the other, and you can tell what I'm talking about when you go down there.
Yeah.
Just a thought, I don't know.
I'm familiar with what you're talking about. And the, the challenge is it's, well, it comes back, but even power wa, power washing alone typically doesn't take it. Usually we have to use solvents and things like that that are more sensitive around the boneyard for us to be using those type of things. So it, it's just a more challenging aspect to do that. Now, we can certainly target some areas, you know, and try to do some targeted, you know, remove obscenities, things of that nature. Yeah. I don't have a solution for you without us spending thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to keep it clean. You know, I think it could be like a seasonal thing is, is kind of something I've envisioned where we have Boneyard Creek Community Day annually. Maybe we could pair that with some type of art, some type of cleanup that happens once a year at that time where we get it new and fresh in spring and understand that it's going to potentially just perpetuate through the year. And then we're not going to try to spend a bunch of money on it through the year and we'll just try to readdress the next year and spend some time, money and effort on cleanup, maybe associated with that time. That would make a lot of sense to me.
Thank you. Other questions? Shandra, did you have any questions?
Chandra, did you have any questions?
No, I didn't.
I had a few. I think almost all were related to, in the memo, the section about the fiscal and budget impact. I see that we have the ending balance of the general fund and the percentage of recurring expenditures. Didn't know if you could tell us off the top of your head, or for next time, what is the impact of this particular amendment? Like, what is that difference in ending balance? Because I know some are grants, some are rolling over. Confused on what's kind of actually a new expense and what's just kind of moving around.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is really just updating the estimates that we had when the budget was adopted, right? We don't have final figures for fiscal year '24 yet. The year is still open. But that's pretty accurate. And the only, I mean, obviously, the focus there is on the general fund. The only additional costs we have in the general fund are $66,000, and both of those are one-time expenses. So it has no impact on recurring expense. But I can try to be more specific next time.
Sure, yes, Mary Alice, do you have others?
I think what Grace is asking for is, you know, to the best of our knowledge, our ending balance is X before this budget amendment, and it's now Y if this amendment is passed. I think that would be really...
Yeah, and so if you look on the exhibit for the budget amendment, you can see the current budget, $17,006,000, and then the revised, $16,940,000. So you can actually see the difference coming out there on the exhibit in that first section, which is general fund.
Okay, so that's the only net change in the general fund? And the others are just reflecting those in the other accounts?
Correct. We generally don't assess all the other funds in the same way, because it's not, it's not operating budget. We don't track recurring versus one-time expenditures.
Thank you. And then also in that section in the memo, so we talked about, all right, so that ending balance of $11.8 million-ish is 26.39% of recurring expenditures. It has to be above 25%, right?
Correct.
So if I was vague mathing this, saying we're at 26, we can't go below 25, so we have 1% of that final budget, which I got to about $450,000?
I don't have my spreadsheet with me. But that sounds in the ballpark.
Okay, so, yeah, I just wanted to confirm, I guess highlight that, that if we're looking at that ending balance, that we only have about half a million left this year to make any kinds of adjustments or amendments, as is.
Correct, you have more, for one-time money, you have a little more capacity. But in terms of recurring expense, it's pretty limited. And we talked about that, I think, when we talked about the budget, that it would be very limited. There's actually more capacity after the budget was done, after some of the changes were made during the budget process. There's a little more capacity than we started with.
And then, lastly, on that same section, it says that the reserved amounts include planned transfers on capital improvements for future funding and second and third years for UPD Community Engagement Team Pilot. I don't know if you could explain more. Do you mean that's within that $11.8 million fund that's kind of earmarked? Or what does that mean?
So that's deducted from the $16.94 before we get to the $11.8. So those are transfers that are incorporated in the capital improvement plan that we plan to make over the next however many years, I can't remember exactly. And also, because the community engagement program, which is, I think in the end, it was two officers, is a one-time expense, right? We're also reserving that to make sure that we don't spend down our fund balance this year and then not have money for those things that are planned in future years.
And I'm sorry, I didn't understand the numbers part there. So are you saying those reserved amounts are within this $11.8 million balance? Or those are separate?
Those are separate.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mary Alice?
I might as well make a motion if there's no more questions. I will move ordinance number 2024-09031, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number One omnibus, to City Council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaia for recommendation for approval on the regular agenda to City Council. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Raphael, would you mind doing a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That item passes on to City Council. Our last item of business is council input and communication. Yes, James?
I did want to thank the public for coming out to the comprehensive plan presentations, particularly the one we had at St. Matthew Lutheran Church in Ward Six and Seven, was had members of the public there, and had, they had good questions and some good engagement. So I do appreciate the public being involved in that process.
Any other council comment? Chandra, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, with no other business for the committee of the whole, we will adjourn.